6:05 PM, Town Council, meeting in the Town Council chamber, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island. Jay will lead us some prayer.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our deliverance, as we give those as testing ourselves, and lead us to the salvation of the innocent. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the flag of the righteous stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess that was a go with the week with the Pope, I guess.
The flag.
All Councilman Dennison is absent. Councilman Luchardi?
Here.
Councilman Mepheor is absent. Council Vice President Williamson?
Here.
And Council President Godwin?
Here.
For Mr. Claire. Presentation of West Warwick Transportation Safety Plan, Safe Streets for All.
I'd like to call up Eric Kill from our consultant that we've been partnering with, and he'll explain and give a brief presentation.
Thank you for the introduction, Mark, and thank you for the invitation to come to address the council. Could we get the slide started? Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, for the last year plus, we've been working. My name is Eric Weiss. I am a transportation planner with a company called Bowman. We're a national consulting firm. And, you go to the next slide, please. We've been working with the town of West Warwick and a number of other towns in Rhode Island over the last year, little over a year, to create safety action plans for these towns. What you see on the screen there is a map of jurisdictions in the United States that have benefited from this federal program called Safe Streets for All. Could we go to the next, please? Safe Streets for All is a grant program out of the United States Department of Transportation with the overarching goal of significantly reducing and ultimately eliminating roadway fatalities and serious injuries. And what this means for the town of West Warwick is that we are shortly going to be delivering a final roadway safety action plan with discreet strategies about how West Warwick can reach or significant reductions and ultimate elimination of such in town. This is all built on what USDOT calls the safe system approach. As you see on the graphic there on the right, it's built on safer vehicles, and specifically that's about folks inside vehicles, but also about the safety of people outside motor vehicles, pedestrians, for instance. Safer speeds, safer roads, post-crash care, which refers to the ability of our first responders to reach crash sites quickly. It's also about the safety of those first responders while they're there at the crash sites. And finally, safer people. That's all about human behavior. That's why you see the bike helmet and the seatbelt highlighted on that graphic. Please. The Rhode Island background to this is that in 2003, Ripta applied for a Safe Streets for All planning grant and won the biggest of all the planning grants that were issued by USDOT in that year, $5 million in total, and invited all of Rhode Island's 39 cities and towns to participate. Ultimately, 31 of our cities and towns opted in, including West Warwick. And you can see those 31 on that graphic. So, about a year ago, we really dove in headfirst with this sort of all-star team of West Warwick staff, led by Mark here, but also Marilyn, Jeff and Kevin, members of your police and fire department as well, and Chris Mann from the public schools. We were fortunate to have a representative of the public schools involved. Not all the towns that we worked with were able to get that. And since transportation is a big piece of public schooling, getting the kids from home to school and then back safely at the end of the day, that's an important element. Next, please. So, the end product of all the work that we did, and we'll get a little bit into that, is a safety action plan, which has eight mandatory components that you see listed here. We won't go into depth out of respect of everybody's time. I could talk literally for hours about the process, but we're going to keep this to 10 minutes or so. These are the eight elements of every safety action plan. We'll focus mostly on the safety analysis. Next, please. So, it's all about the fatal and serious injury crashes. The data set that we are operating from is a five-year period from January 1st, 2019, to December 31st, 2023. And these are the numbers out of West Warwick for that five-year period. Next, please. We conducted three types of data analysis. The first is baseline crash analysis, which essentially means we're taking the raw data, comes to us as gigantic spreadsheets that nobody would ever want to look at. And even if you did look at it, nobody would be able to make head or tails of what they're looking at. It's just numbers on a grid. Like, if we printed out all the sheets and stapled them together, it'd be the size of, like, five king bed sheets all stapled together. But we can process that data and present it in forms that is digestible and meaningful to somebody who, for instance, checks in on the town website to learn more about the project. For instance, this map you're looking at here is a heat map for the town where representing frequency of crashes by location. FI on the title you see there means fatal and all injuries. All modes means everybody traveling on West Warwick streets. Next, please. Here is the same sort of map, but only using data for pedestrians and bicyclists. VRU is short for vulnerable road user, which essentially means anybody who's not in a car or a truck. Next, please. High-risk network is the second type of data analysis being conducted. What this is, is taking all the data from around the state for fatalities and serious injuries, and taking a close look at what are the characteristics of the roadways where these crashes happened? How many lanes wide are these roads? How wide is the street? What's the posted speed limit? What's the context of where the road is? Is it a residential area, commercial, industrial? And in doing so, we can find correlations between where crashes are happening and certain aspects of a roadway. And then, in doing so, we can find roadways just like that, that perhaps don't have a lot of crashes happening on them now, but we know that because of those characteristics, crashes will start happening. Then we can be proactive about making changes to those roadways before the crashes, before the fatalities, before the serious injuries start. Next, please. So, that map was, thank you. So, it's fine. The high injury network is the third type, which is essentially a combination of the baseline crash analysis heat map data where crashes have been happening, with the high-risk network where we suspect crashes will happen because of the characteristics of those roadways. You can combine them onto a single map. And so, you can see in green, those are the roadways where we'd like to spend a little more attention and be proactive, because the characteristics of those roads suggest there will be crashes there. The red is reactive. Crashes are already happening, so we know that we should pay attention to those. And in blue, those are roads where the characteristics of the roads suggest crashes are going to happen. And in fact, yes, they are happening. So, it's a combination of the both. Next, please. So, this is the same thing, but only for vulnerable road users. Again, that's mostly pedestrians and bicyclists. Next, please. We can also take the data as it is and turn it into graphs and charts that also help demonstrate what's happening in the real world. West Warwick, as we can see on this chart, this bar chart is doing quite well as compared to the rest of the state. There are only six or seven towns, municipalities, in the state that have fewer per capita fatality and injury crashes. For this, we're only looking at fatalities and injury crashes. Crashes that are property damage only aren't accounted for any of the analysis that's been happening. Reason for that, of course, is that the whole intent of the entire project is to reduce fatalities and injuries. Next, please. And here's yet another way that we can take the data to make it more digestible and understandable. So, the two bars at the bottom represent bicyclists and pedestrians, and we can see that the average crash for a bicyclist or a pedestrian is much more likely to lead to serious injury. That's why in this study and in the plan that came out of it, there is special attention paid to vulnerable road users. And yet another way of taking the raw data and turning it into a chart that people can bat on. So, here we see that most crashes are happening in the afternoon hours between 3:00 and 6:00 during weekdays. Probably not a surprise to anybody. People are eager to get home after work, for instance. And we can also break it down by day of week and environmental conditions, like light and if it was raining. An important piece of the whole process was public engagement. The recommendations that we made in this plan aren't based solely on data, but also on talking with West Warwick residents and learning from them. So, we tabled at a couple of events. One was the farmer's market, talking with people because they were shopping, getting their thoughts on where we ought to be focusing attention. Where are the scary intersections? Where do people feel unsafe driving or walking or getting off the bus, for instance? There were also stakeholder interviews with organizations like food pantries and conversations with patrol officers on the police force, so we can learn about, for instance, what are the near-miss hotspots in town? Locations that won't necessarily show up as hotspots in the crash maps, but the police know that every time they drive through there, it's like, yikes, something's bound to happen here. Having all that information also helps inform our work in creating the plan. There was also a survey that went around the entire state. One of the questions was, what's your zip code? So, then we were able to determine which of the respondents were West Warwick residents. And equity, also an important piece of the puzzle, knowing where, for instance, neighborhoods with higher percentage of no-car households are places where people are more likely to be walking, whether it's walking for shopping or to get to work or walking to the bus. Having that information really helps us to understand the full picture of where there will be more people walking, and we might want to spend more attention on pedestrian safety in those neighborhoods. And of course, the section on policy and process. We did review policy and process related to traffic safety and public works and planning and made recommendations on that as well. So, here we are, ultimately coming down to what sites were selected. This was all done in tandem with the task force, the list of whom we saw early on in this presentation. And we also had the members of the task force vote on the criteria we should use to prioritize the importance of these locations in the plan. We can get to that in just a moment. So, for each of those locations, we made observations and recommendations for countermeasures that would help with roadway safety. USDOT has what they call proven countermeasures, a list of 28 of them, that data tell us, real-world research tells us that these do actually reduce crashes. So, for instance, we see crosswalk visibility enhancements can reduce pedestrian injury crashes up to 40%. Simply doubling the width of the edge line on a road in research reduced crashes up to 37%. So, some of these are very low-cost interventions, but they're all proven to make a difference. So, going out to all the sites, our planners and engineers made our observations. As you can see, this was one particularly interesting location. A lot of observations related to roadway safety for motorists and pedestrians. Next, please. And here you see that same intersection from the opposite side, more observations. Next, please. And so, these were the countermeasures that our team came up with for this particular intersection. We found that there were issues with the pedestrian push buttons. It was low-visibility crosswalks. Not all of the crossings had crosswalks. The signalheads themselves could be made more visible, and some other recommendations. So, in the plan itself, a draft of which Task Force numbers have, and a final version will likely come in the next, I would like to say the next week, but it might be two weeks. In there, you'll find a breakdown like this for each of the locations, including cost destination. Next, please. So, at this point, all we're waiting on is comments from Rideout and statewide planning. We're not expecting a whole lot of comments from them, but we can't finalize the plan until we do hear back from them with their comments. And we'll be able to present Mark and the rest of the task force and the town as a whole with finalized safety action plans. The importance of the timing is that having a safety action plan means that the town is then eligible to apply for Safe Streets for All implementation grants. Figure money, so all the recommendations in the plan would then be able to actually get implemented. So, there's about half a billion dollars available for this implementation round. Grants tend to be in the 2.5 to 25 million-dollar range. Of course, all over the country, towns and counties and regional government agencies are fighting over these grants, so it is a very competitive process. The window is open till June 26th, so we are hoping that we can present this plan to the town in pretty short order and that the town will adopt this plan, so that West Warwick, if it chooses to, will be able to apply for those implementation grants. That's all I've got for you.
Any questions?
So, those grants, there's not a pool that's, will be directed right to Rhode Island? So, it's a nationwide competition?
That's right. There have been grant programs in the past where there were, probably in negotiation with the Senate, every state was guaranteed a certain amount. It's not the case with this program. It will be competitive. And as I mentioned early on, it was Ripta that actually applied for this grant, allowing us to create this safety action plan for the town of West Warwick at no cost, except for some staff time. Ripta will not be pursuing an implementation grant this time, so it's up to the municipalities.
Are they matching grants?
Yes, yes. A 20% local match will be required. I should also add, that's how it is for this round. There will be one final round in a year from now of Safe Streets for All grants, both planning and implementation grants. There's no guarantee that it's going to look the same in 12 months as it does right now.
Eric, one of the things that I think came up was, a lot of these roads that we've identified are actually state roads, so they're outside of our maintenance jurisdiction. So, if we're going to apply for money on behalf of the town, with the town co-pay, we'd obviously, most likely be focusing on the roads that we manage and maintain. And then, at some point, if the state does it, then perhaps we have a partnership to address those, except for maybe the not-so-heavy whiffs. Or, I know a lot of them where else we can just call Rideout maintenance people for a lot of the crosswalk signals, and we've already done that, for those to be addressed since they maintain.
Mark, I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. The firms working on these 31 safety action plans have almost universally found that the troubled intersections are Rideout intersections. So, I mentioned earlier on that we asked the task force to vote on the criteria that will lead to the ranking of the projects, so that in the plan, they are prioritized. One of the criteria that was voted on is, is this intersection or roadway under local control. For all of the eight municipalities that my team worked on, that was always near the top, like, top three or four out of 10 criteria that were part of the vote. Because, working with Rideout, it just, I guess it's two things. One, it adds a lot of time to the process. The other thing is, there's a sense that if it's a state road, it really ought to be the state's responsibility to pursue the funding and do the work, not a municipal responsibility. So, earlier today, I had a conversation with the DPW director for the town of Coventry, and part of the conversation was asking him, of the locations in town that we presented and they voted on, which ones do they actually want to go after funding for? Because they are going to pursue an implementation grant. And they were all under local control. They didn't want to deal with Rideout at all. It preferred to simply let the safety group at Rideout, the traffic safety folks, know where the problems are. You've got issues with signal timing here, this crosswalk, you know, the utilities dug it up and didn't get repainted properly. We need you to go after the utility to make sure that crosswalk gets repainted properly, things like that.
Was there any effort to recruit Rideout into this process?
Oh, absolutely. So, Rideout has been reviewing all the plans, and at the same time, Ripta and Rideout have been working on, been negotiating a sort of MOU or MOA to help bring them into the process, have them be part of the planning, rather than setting up some sort of adversarial, you must do this because our town's told you to. So, yeah, that's been going on for months.
Okay. And if we, this plan is adopted, yet we get no funding for it, it would probably be difficult for us to proceed. I mean, there's no, what kind of commitment are we making if we adopt this plan, I guess?
You're not making any commitment at all. Yeah, there's value to the plan beyond, yeah, beyond the fact that it can then be used to go after the Safe Streets for All implementation. The town then has a sort of a roadmap. I don't know if that's the best word for it to use, but a sort of a roadmap to where are the highest problem areas and what can we do there? Is there low-hanging fruit? Are there some things that we can do that are small ones? Improving crosswalks, putting reflective backing plates on traffic signals. You probably see that some traffic, some people don't notice, but if you start looking at traffic signals as you drive around, you'll notice some of them have a steel plate, it's probably aluminum, actually, aluminum plate affixed to the back of them. And of those, sometimes they have retroreflective borders to them. That's retroreflective borders on a signal backplate is one of the 28 proven safety countermeasures. And if you've got signalheads in town that have that backplate that don't have the retroreflective hedging, that's real low-hanging fruit. Just got to get a bucket truck out there and buy some of that reflective tape, stick it on there, and instantly, you've improved the safety of that intersection. Thank you for asking.
Next question I have is, so a lot of the areas that you have on your maps seems to be state roads also. Now, if we're applying for that grant money, I know the state doesn't like us to install them in roads. They even like to file grievance sometimes. So, would that be an issue, or is that the state's responsibility? That's a question that is spock, because I know sometimes a town has something, the state voting, we can't agree for it.
Yeah. So, the state clearly, you know, they want a physical alteration permit to be filed each and every time the municipality intends to go out and do something, even if it's something as simple as restructuring a crosswalk. That physical alteration permit has to be pursued and filed. This has been a topic of conversation among the consultants and Ripta for, I don't know, six months, eight months. And again, this is why a lot of your peer municipalities have been pursuing, have decided to pursue, for the grant at least, only those locations that they have control over. The state has been part of the process, Rideout and statewide planning, so they've been engaged for, well, they've been engaged since the beginning, but deeply engaged for probably four to six months. And they know what's coming. They know that there are going to be 31 safety action plans coming, and they know that for all these plans, the majority of them are going to be making recommendations that it's really the state's responsibility to follow up on. Hence, the memorandum of agreement between Ripta and Rideout. It's a little bit of a quandary, but it's also helpful for Rideout to know where these issues are. As good as the agency may be, and as many staff as they have running around and between all of us, they don't have nearly the number of field staff that they need. Last time I asked somebody, for the entire state, they only have four people doing signage around the entire state on state roads, which to me was kind of shocking. But that's neither here nor there. They have their work cut out to them, even without all these plans, as we all know. But it'll just get added to their queue. Any other questions?
No, thank you. Actually, it'll be useful, whether we go for funding or not. It will certainly be useful. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks, Eric.
Great consent agenda. Approved the minutes from the April 1st budget public hearing, the April 1st regular town council meeting, and the April 8 budget public hearing.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Eric, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Both, ayes have it?
Ordinance says, first reading of a Norman's authorizing a budget amendment which will move funds to salary lines for raises that occurred as a result of collective bargaining that occurred after the budget was adopted.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Move the second, any discussion?
No, this is a
He's coming.
All right.
But this is a long time coming.
Yes. Actually, this is the item that we, another item that was on the ballot last year that we asked if we could do this earlier, and I think there was some misunderstanding as to what that ballot item was, but
Definitely misunderstanding, yes.
The charter says you have to wait until the last 90 days.
The last, yeah, quarter of the year. So, this is basically, I put this together, I went through all the line items and kind of just allocated it out, and this is the budget amendment that will take it out of general government and put it in all the lines.
Any questions for Kristen? If you can hold on, yes?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I have one, yes.
Business licenses. Request from Rockwell Amusement and Promotions Inc. for a carnival license, and request from Phantom Fireworks for fireworks and Sunday sales.
Move the business licenses.
Second.
Move in a second, discussion? The only thing I have, it doesn't say when to fire a work. Maybe I'm missing it, but it says 6:26 to 7:05, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Phantom Fireworks is their sales rate.
Yeah, but that's the tent, I think, that's set up in Papagino's Plaza.
Okay.
It's not an actual firework.
Yes, it's not.
So, they're set up in the same baccalante novel, don't you?
Yeah, 20 by 30 tent.
We get them to sponsor a carnival? We get them to sponsor a carnival? Any other comment? Any public comment? Eric, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
New business, March twenty twenty five monthly finance report.
Good evening again. Current year tax collections total fifty three million, three hundred and forty nine thousand, one hundred dollars and eighty three cents, which is eighty point one seven percent of the budget for current year taxes. We've collected three quarters and are trending slightly ahead of, eh, eh, ahead of expected. Prior year tax collections total eight hundred and twenty two thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and sixty eight cents, which is equal to sixty three point two five percent of the budgeted amount. This line has been adjusted by the two hundred and six thousand, three hundred and thirty four dollar and six cents sixty day rule, which is accrued back to twenty twenty four. This line will increase as we get closer to the tax sales scheduled for May ninth, which is two and a half weeks away. Overall, the revenues are at seventy five point four three percent, which is higher than the expected seventy five percent. This is mainly attributed to strong tax collections and higher than expected finance building town clerk and town clerk revenues. Expenditures are trending under budget at seventy two point nine five percent. This is two point oh five percent below the expected seventy five. Most of the operating departments are running on target or slightly above budget. A budget amendment will be processed in April to reallocate funds set aside for negotiations to the respective departments. The Civic Center has current operating expenditures of six hundred and thirty one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and nine cents and operating revenues of four hundred and eighty one thousand, three ninety two and eighty nine cents. The full amount of the wind turbine electricity expenses, as well as the Civic Center share of property and liability expense has been recorded for the year. The bank balance as of four three twenty twenty five was five million, six hundred and thirty three thousand, three hundred and seventy seven dollars and twenty eight cents. We earned in addition with nine thousand, four hundred and fifty one dollars and eighty cents in interest on the three million in the interest bearing sweep account at Citizens Bank for the month of March. We also earned four hundred and thirty two thousand and nine dollars and sixty three cents in interest on our ARCA funds invested in Centennial Bank as of February twenty twenty five. Any questions?
Questions for Kristen?
No, that, that wind turbine amount of the Civic Center is one sixty, is that right?
I think what, yeah, whatever.
Yes. Yeah.
So.
So that makes a difference.
It does.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you for the opportunity, Kristen.
You're welcome.
The next one will take no action on, uh, per the request of the fire chief.
Approval of request from Narragansett Electric for pole petition on Nottingham Drive and need Marion Lee.
Move the, move the resolution. So.
Moving second, any discussion? So who wants, uh, Mon, Ennis, or one, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Need Marion and Nottingham.
Yep.
Any questions? Eric, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
My building committee update.
Mark, uh, simply we did get the information, uh, request back from the council on, from Ride on the stage two submissions. Uh, I don't have specifics yet. They're still being digested, but as expected, essentially they, they come in a few categories. First is a request for information, uh, clarification, understand some of the proposed scope of work and how it aligns with proposed educational programming. Plus estimate validations, which were requested to clarify scope of work and how it relates to their third party cost estimates. And then some schematic design clarifications, which were requested to clarify the whys behind certain design choices and to consider alternatives to some proposed design. So that's all being digested. Um, and the dynamics of deciding whether it's going to be returned for May consideration or consideration in the fall. Um, the next school building committee has been rescheduled. It'll now be next Wednesday, April thirtieth at four PM in the median side.
Any questions for Ma? Thank you, Ma.
Upcoming appointments, sewer use for review. Appointment to fill a vacancy as an alternate member for a three year term. Sewer use for review, appointment to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a three year term. Tax assessment for the review, school building committee, tree warden, recreation committee, Tuxit River authority. Upcoming town council meetings and events, May sixth, we have a regular town council meeting, May eighth, town council budget vote. May twentieth, regular town council meeting, June third, regular town council meeting, public forum.
Any public comment? Anybody give a vote, except for the wrong boys? Eric, none?
The chief, the chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Public care, you have you, alright, I know.
I don't, you should, you should, angle along if you need advice.
You can be well. Alright, meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, April twenty second. It's now six forty PM. Public care number one for fiscal year twenty six wastewater treatment facility proposed budget.
We'll call council president Goslin.
Here.
Vice President Williamson.
Here.
Councilman Messier, Sapsin, Councilman Luchardi.
Yeah.
Councilman Dennis, Sapsin. Participating communities, town of Coventry, town of Situate, city of Cranston, city of Warwick, town of West Greenwich. There is a port on, pardon, excuse me, port on the street. And only a limited number is proposed wastewater facility FY twenty six budget.
So you sent over numerous ideas she wants. We're looking at, you wanna go over that first?
Actually, I think Jeff.
Or Jeff, I'm sorry.
Sure.
So, good evening, council. I have a broad overview of what we're looking to do from the first, uh, budget workshop, and I let Tony go into the numbers that he's worked out so far. So at the budget workshop, we talked about, uh, increasing costs, the bond that we, uh, went out for and need to find a way to pay for that. So we look towards EDUs. After some discussion, it looks like we're trying to stray away from EDUs and council asked us to get creative with what we can do to try and, uh, come up with a budget. So, uh, Tony and I had a couple of discussions. And what we came up with is that, uh, currently we have a minimum usage charge of four thousand cubic feet. What we want to do there is lower that in four thousand to thirty eight hundred. So turn them on the numbers behind it, but we're looking to make little changes to the budget to achieve our goal. Along with the minimum usage going down, we're also looking to increase our charge based upon consumption. Right now, we're charging eighty percent of consumption of water. Go ahead. Sorry, council president. So instead of charging eighty percent of consumption, we're looking to move that up to ninety percent of consumption. See an increased charge for people that are actually using the water. Aside from that, let me say something else, Tony. I'm sorry. Oh, as, well, as far as that, I should, let me say that we're still looking for a rate increase as well. So looking for a small rate increase. Bring down the minimum usage, bring up the water consumption charge.
You said bring down the minimum usage. This is where I'm going backwards.
Sure.
Right now, the minimum usage charge is four thousand.
Based upon four thousand cubic feet of water.
Now, minimum usage should be based on thirty eight hundred. Off this proposal, thirty eight hundred.
Yes.
This is where I'm getting it backwards, I think. Wouldn't it want to go to forty two? No. Cause if you're going down to thirty eight, if I use thirty eight hundred square cubic feet, whatever it is.
Times a rate.
Times a rate. Times a rate.
Right.
It's gonna be a lower number than forty two.
So basically, we're saying you're using forty, uh, four thousand right now. What I suppose was saying, you're only using thirty.
First, the minimum usage rate right now.
It's based on four thousand cubic feet, which comes to one hundred and eighty six dollars at the current rate.
Okay, so then at the current rate, thirty eight hundred be what?
Give me one second.
So.
No, sorry.
I know I meant to call you in this week, but I tied up.
Based on thirty eight hundred, it would be one seventy six seventy. It would go down.
Okay.
And, and, and those are some of the numbers, the things that Jeff was talking about, but I'll get more into as far as how it affects the different groups.
So I'm gonna stop now, Tony, let's go into the numbers behind it.
So the, the proposed rate increase of the rate itself is fifteen cents from four sixty five to four eighty. Um, as Jeff mentioned, we're proposing increasing the percentage of water consumption that we bill on from eighty to ninety percent. We still want to give people, um, a discount for, oh, some sort of, like, one called a discount. Allocation allotment for watering outside, things of that nature for water that doesn't go back to us. Many communities around the state have done away with that and bill on a hundred percent of water consumption. And if you want to get credit for outside, you have to put the D up here. We don't want to go that far, but we want to bump that number up from eighty percent to ninety percent. By dropping the minimum from four thousand cubic feet to thirty eight hundred cubic feet, an additional two hundred um, residents based on this year's billing would qualify for the minimum bill. So we're helping out a few more people that are in that thirty eight hundred to thirty nine ninety nine range. And I get the rate increase, right? Fifteen cents?
Yes.
Alright, so thank you. So to get, to give you actual numbers, and I'm gonna bounce back and forth there. The proposal we came in with two weeks ago with the EDU charge and a twenty cent rate increase, keeping the eighty percent, keeping the four thousand cubic foot minimal. The minimum users bill would have gone off forty three dollars a year. Under our revised proposal tonight, their bill will go down four dollars a year. So it's a small decrease, but they're seeing a decrease in, in their bills and aren't going up. The average user on the old proposal would have increased forty nine dollars. On this proposal, it would be fifty two dollars. So they're still within that range. There wasn't a dra- a dramatic shift. Well, users under the original proposal would have increased fifty five dollars a year. This proposal, they only increased fifteen dollars a year. So they're, they're, they would see, um, a little bit of a better situation here. And a property like Royal Mills and using them as an example, under our original proposal, their bill would have gone up ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars next year. Under our revised proposal, their bill will decrease nine hundred dollars versus what they're paying now. So most, mo- we, we feel we, hopefully anyway, well, I, I would say we welcome comment and input, uh, addressed some concerns raised by the council a couple of weeks ago, tried to help the, the minimum users try to, I suggest, to get creative with other ways of raising the revenue that we give.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the comments I made was the people who don't do it shouldn't be getting charged and the people who are using it should be getting charged.
That's what it was out.
And that's what they.
And we took that into consideration with this proposed budget.
Yep.
Yep. I mean, it's just not fair to the, like I said, the little elderly person or the person, single person who doesn't use that much water. You know, and then they're paying the same as somebody who's using a lot. You know, and I kind of disagree with you on the ninety percent too, but I mean, that's, that could be for another time. Because I, I know everybody has to usually put a D duck meter into when they fill in their pool, their lawn, whatever, and they send you that information yearly. You know, so I, I, you know, I, I get it's a lot more work for you, you guys. A lot of people start slapping D duck meters in and then it backfired too. But, um, I, I don't have a problem with this, this budget. I think it's much better this way. Thank you, thank you.
And you guys, I know you went back and there were, there were a number of renditions and, and discussions. Um, so they, they did a lot of work to come up with something that hopefully could meet some of the, the challenges that we thought we had. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, who are our larger water users, users, users?
That I would have to really look at. It's, um,
Like, just, just so I have, I just.
You definitely look into it.
Well, yeah, it would be people that with, I mean, I can get you an idea, but it'd be people with larger properties that have full in-ground sprinkler system.
Obviously businesses.
Businesses, large apartment complexes, um, industrial.
Industrial.
You, you can say this.
I'm not looking for a full list, but we can only give you the top five, top ten.
Okay.
I can do that for you.
Nothing, earth shattering, just, I'm just a curiosity fact.
Mm-hmm. Wanted to.
Just to, did, how it helps.
Get to your time, I'll just leave. Cause even the tax, I always look at that. I always look at the top ten taxpayers a year, man. I have a top ten list. Any questions for Jeff on this? Any public comment on the sewer?
And the second public hearing will be
May.
On the sixth.
Sixth.
Yes.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you for being great.
Thank you.
I would eat them.
Motion, Jared.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Going into the next agenda. Meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, April twenty second. Westport, it is now six forty nine PM. Westport Town Council, Acton's Sewer Commission.
We will break the local, but we are.
Council President Goslin.
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson.
Here.
Councilman Messier, Sapsin, Councilman Luchardi.
Here.
Councilman Dennis, Sapsin. Participating communities, town of Coventry, town of Situate, city of Cranston, city of Warwick, town of West Greenwich. Uh, court is declared. First item is approval of the minutes of the February twenty five, twenty twenty five sewer commission meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Second item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the April one, twenty twenty five FY twenty six budget workshop.
Ooh, approval.
Second.
You have a comment?
All in favor?
All in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it.
Superintendent.
Superintendent. Hi, Jeff, again.
Uh, I got some.
It's a lot of paperwork, I have to throw papers. Oh, I have to shut. Alright, so superintendent report, March twenty twenty five. Uh, it was an average month for us. Our average flow was six point four million gallons per day. Our maximum peak flow was twelve point two million gallons per day. And our minimum was three point one million gallons per day. For, uh, C B O D removal as of March twenty fifth, it was ninety six percent, which created a four point three milligrams per liter. Uh, T S S as of the twenty fifth was ninety eight percent, which is two point six milligrams per liter. Our phosphorus as of March twenty third was zero point five milligrams per liter. So we're doing good as far as our permit. For sludge removal, we sent five hundred and sixty four tons to Syngro and nothing anywhere else. Well, to the Epic Syngro. So I keep adding that since we've been there, we haven't, knock on wood, we have not been to any other facility except through this epic transportation system. So it seems to work out really well and consistent for us.
You had some early, you had some early issues. You took care of that. Some of them.
It was just an early hiccup, just trying to get the staff to figure out how to take things apart for them to get, to get them ready for the lowered to come. So it was just, it was a learning curve for us, but we've pretty much figured everything out now and we're moving along very well.
Window open and season is coming, so.
Yeah.
Just on my.
Summer time.
Keep trying our best.
Yeah.
So as far as collection system, there were, uh, three sewer backups, one in the public line on Patuxa Terrace and two on the private lines, uh, one on Baby Drive and one on Crossland Road. For the month of March, there were no odor complaints or facility violations. That's all I have for my report.
Do you think that the zero for both of those is, is due to, well, it helps with the new system yet?
I think in part by it, but as far as our odor complaints go, our, our biggest time of year would be, isn't later in the summer, the August, September, October. So that'd be the real test of time for us. We are putting in a new chemical feeder, which is using potassium permanganate or pomegranate, as everyone's to call it. So we're gonna be inducting that into our system and, you know, we'll see how that works out. It's recommended by DEM. So they believe it's gonna be good for the facility and we'll see in a couple of months how well it works out.
When, when will that be fully functional, Jeff?
So as far as the equipment, we're still waiting on that. The council approved the actual use of the chemicals. We ordered it, we have it on site, and then we're, uh, gonna start dosing it manually into our tanks until we have the feeder up and running and can do it automatically. So starting to take care of the situation at this point in time going forward.
Right.
Any other questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, council.
Does, you know, does do a pre-treatment report.
Good evening. The industrial pretreatment for the month of March. Uh, Farmera submitted their, uh, quarterly, uh, self-monitoring report. In all permit limits, we're in compliance. Permits were revised, uh, for, um, Amgen. Uh, they have a new management system on individuals, so we have to change the permit. And the same thing along, follows along with Amtrul. A new person to sign the individual applications and permit, um, information. So we have to change the permit accordingly. With regards to private wastewater treatment systems, um, the East Greenwich Square, again, they do their quarterly cleaning. Other system was found to be in compliance and in, in good condition. During the food service industries that we inspect each month, we did foreign Warwick, one in West Warwick, two in Coventry and four in East Greenwich. All of those with the exception of Neon Market were in compliance. Neon Market was issued a notice of violation because they had not cleaned their grease recovery. Neon Market was issued a notice of violation because they had not cleaned their grease recovery system. Uh, but all the rest were in compliance, followed the regulations. Uh, with regards to new permits being issued to the food service, McDonald's on Division Street, the company changed ownership, so a new permit was issued, as well as the P V D facility on, uh, Division Street in East Greenwich. They also changed ownership, so a new permit was issued. We did receive, uh, the Stop and Go gas station on Providence Street. They're changing to a convenience store. Um, the, we received the information, and everything was found to be in compliance, and approval letter was issued. Uh, Scrubberdub Car Wash there on eleven nineteen of Division Street. What they're doing is tying into the Neon Market, uh, system. Um, the, there were some issues with the submittal, and, uh, they will be revising their application and submitting it by the end of this month. With regards to construction, Kava Grill and Chick Fil- uh, Chick Fil A is still under construction and will continue. We did meet with the Town of Coventry with regards to their high school and the connection of their high school into the Coventry, ultimately, West Warwick system. That meeting went very well. They understand the requirements of pretreatment, um, and we're waiting for the final application.
And so are they still trucking every day? Uh, what are they, they are? It's gonna be incredibly expensive.
Yeah, they, uh, they bought out Septic Halla.
Yeah.
But they couldn't haul. Because they didn't have a license to do that, so they're, they're hauling right now, and I believe there's a grant to get that sued. I don't know where that stands.
Any other question for Jim?
Jim, I, I probably should ask this, because Jeff was up there. Um, on the private industry side, septic companies used to be able to dump in West Warwick. I think now they hear of Cranston. We don't allow that, correct? I just wanted to.
It is in our ordinance that we allow it, but the rates are so high that kind of discourages them. They go to, mo- most of the place will go to Cranston, um, Q D C in, um, in Quonset. Uh, those are the two major places that people go to, because.
Yeah, and the reason why I'm mad, because.
We don't want odors, so that's the reason.
One of the things that was brought up was the rate to dump, and it was actually very low in Cranston at one time, I guess, and versus, I know we are much higher.
Yes, and we tried to do that on a rate.
Fine, no, because.
And that's the, I mean.
The reason why I'm asking is somebody brought up to me after last council, after the last time we had a discussion, saying it's cheaper for some of these companies that fill up an entire tanker to go dispose theirs than what it is for their house to actually empty into the sewer system, so.
Well, it costs, well, for a Septic Halla or a private hauler, it costs me three hundred and fifty dollars, that's every two years. But that's what it costs for a Septic Halla. And they go to Cranston, or or my hauler goes to, uh, Quonset. Um, their facilities are more, they're they're remote, they're easy to deal with. West Warwick, we have a system, we put it in, but the odors would be too great, and we just don't want it.
No, I, I'm totally in grains, but I'm just like shocked that it was to get rid of old truckload versus.
Yeah, but the truckload is only a thousand gallons to, to a couple of thousand gallons, you know.
How many times a year they dump versus.
Yeah, that's true.
All right, until then, thank you.
Financial report. Yet a date operating in debt expenses through the end of eight March, sorry. Total seven million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars, which is seventy-five percent of the budget. We're right on target through, uh, first three quarters of the year. Over overtime for the month of March was eleven thousand, two hundred and seven dollars, which is seven percent of the annual budget. Yet a date overtime is one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three sixty-four, which is seventy-five percent of the budget. But we also do have, uh, savings of sixty thousand, seven ninety-seven in the general wages line items due to vacant positions earlier in the year and people being out on, uh, unpaid medical leave. Sludge removal cost through the end of March, total seven sixty-eight, three seventy-nine. So we have hit, as we've discussed in the past, we have hit the budget for the year. On sludge removal, we're at under one percent of the budget. Fiscal year sewer usage and industrial collections through the end of March total seven million, four hundred and nine thousand, two seventy-eight, which is, I didn't put a percentage of the total bill, uh, but as of today, we're eighty-nine percent collected, which is right on target where we, where we normally are. Prior year sewer usage collections through the end of March total five hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars, of which sixty-five thousand, three oh one is penalty interest. Current fiscal year sewer assessment collections through the end of last month total two hundred and eighty-six thousand, thirty-one dollars, which is a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-seven percent of the total bill. And cash investments through the end of February, because we did not have the March bank statements yet, was three million, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, eight thirty-nine. And we have, just to give the council a little more information, I work with the finance director, and we spoke with Centerville, Centerville Bank, and we're in, we've switched accounts with them, and we're in a twelve-month rate walk now on the investments at Centerville. So we'll get a four percent annual return instead of three and a half. So we'll make a little bit more money there, and that's my report, council president.
Any questions, Tony?
No, but I just would like to re- reiterate the sludge removal, if you see, it's at one oh one.
We're expecting.
We are expecting it, but just reminding people that, so we're gonna go over budget this year, and then the budget was just presented, um, by by the staff. It's a much higher number because of the way we have to get rid of it, but it's helping our odor control, so. And pointing that out again, you're right, we do expect it.
Come ahead, Tony. Uh, resolutions, S C twenty-twenty-five dash thirteen, bid award for the Maisy Quinn pump station upgrades.
What's your resolution?
Second.
Moving second, Jim?
We're on the road.
Uh, basically, we had three bidders, uh, for the upgrade of the Maisy Quinn pump station. Uh, they were hot engineering, um, Sapo, and, uh, Bisco Construction. Hot Engineering was a low-qualified bidder, um, and we're recommending recommending them, uh, for the award in the amount of one million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Uh, just to give you a brief synopsis of what this will entail is replacing all of the valves at the pump station, upgrading the pump, one of the pumps, replacing the odor control system that is there with a brand-new odor control system and flow control, so during storm events, we can take additional flow at that station and avoiding overflows downstream.
And actually, Jim, and I know I've asked you this question already, um, you look at the base bid with heart, and it's, you know, a million dollars less than than the other two companies, and the adds are are varying. Um, but you've done the analysis and.
Uh, when we saw the bids like this, uh, we always take a look at it. Um, I did go call the low bidder and ask him if there was an error, and they says, no, they're fine with this. And kind of makes sense when you think about, I'm replacing eight valves, a million two to replace eight valves, kind of a lot. In speaking with the second bidder, there were things that they put into that bid that they didn't have to. They didn't understand what was required, um, and they added elements to that that wasn't necessarily part of the bid package or that line item. The third bidder, he never even went to the site, Sean. I don't give much credence to that value at all.
Any questions for Jim? Eric Nun, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Public comment? I have one thing to add, just because it wasn't, I'm glad you reminded me, and it wasn't on the agenda. Um, just to give you, um, a heads up, our overtime next month, you're gonna see a spike. Uh, Jeff can speak better to the details, but I believe we had a radio communications issue at the, uh, Quicker Lane pump station. So it's required overtime shifts for the guys to be on site to make sure that the pump station is working properly. But I'll let Jeff speak from that.
Sure, so it's our Quicker Lane pump station right near Cardis Branger. And, uh, one of the pumps, we have two there, one was broke and out for repair right now. Because we only have one pump there, we need to have radio communication. Unfortunately, our antenna communication went down, so we had one pump running, and we couldn't see on our computers at the facility if it's running or not. So it's just one pump running blind. So in order to make sure that we stay on top, and in case the second pump does fail, we had staff in there around the clock after shifts. So second, third shift during the week and around the clock on the weekends. So we are working to repair it. It was a holiday weekend this past weekend, so there was an increased cost in in overtime. But we have to do that in order to ensure that it's not an issue with sewage overflowing at that station, getting into a waterway that's right near there. I think D E M would be very happy if we said, oh, we didn't do anything about it, it was an issue that happened yesterday, and we're just getting to it now because no one was there to watch it. So we're taking precautionary actions to make sure that everything runs smoothly at that station until we get it back up and running.
Can you tell us why the transmitter or the radio is not working, or do we, is it old?
So the vendor that we're dealing with said it's outlived its useful life, just like many of our other eight stations around, uh, around town. So as part of our capital budget, we have a number to actually replace all of them next fiscal year, if approved. So we're looking to update that so that this doesn't happen again. I can tell you, as of, I believe it was Sunday, communication was restored. So it it comes in and out. Usually, when you have heavy rains, it'll go out for so many days, and then at some point, something happens and communication comes back. There's a couple of stations that we have like that. So we're looking into it right now to see about replacing parts just at that station, because there only is one pump for the next ten weeks or so.
Thank you for the heads up.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment?
Any online?